Could I have your attention, please? I'd like to go ahead and bring this meeting to order with the school board. And with that, I'd like for you to please stand for the invocation. We're going to have a moment of silence, please, and then we'll do the invocation. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, everybody, for being here. If you have a cell phone there, could you turn it down or turn it off? And if you need to make a phone call, please go out in the lobby, and we appreciate that very much. With that, I'd like to have our commission introduce themselves. Mr. Potts?
I'm Ed Potts, Commissioner Ed Potts.
Commissioner Jennifer Blaylock.
Charlotte Green Brown.
Vice Mayor Dana Miller.
Good evening, and I am...
Thank you so...
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, wonderful. Good evening. I'm Leonetta McNeely, and I am Vice Chair of the Alachua County School Board. Our Chairman, Diane McGraw, regrets that she could not be here tonight but because of illness. But I'd like for my colleagues to introduce themselves.
Thank you. Good evening. Tina Surtin, Alachua County, School District One.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Rockwell, Alachua County, District Three.
Hello. I'm Kay Abbott, District Five.
Thank you. Mr. Shane Andrews.
I'm Shane Andrews. Shane Andrews, Superintendent Schools, Alachua County Public Schools.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, I'd like to say, first of all, to the City of Alachua and to the citizens, thank you so very much for having us tonight. We are excited about what's going to take place in this next hour, and we are ready to move forward. Mayor, I'm going to ask if we can go on and get started with our presenters tonight.
Please do.
And on my list, I see them in the audience, I have Mrs. Jacquetaro and Mrs. Maria Yunus. And so you can take it over from there. We're going to start with the accomplishments. Just a minute, let me go back. I'm sorry. We are going to start with enrollment and demographics, and then move into accomplishments, grades, assessments, and so forth. Take it away.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'll start with the demographics and give everybody an update.
Please do.
Thank you, Mayor. With Erby Elementary School here in town, currently, we have three hundred and fifty-eight students. We have a school capacity there of five hundred and thirty-six. Currently, we have thirty-four pre-K students, one hundred and fifteen kindergarten students, ninety-six first graders, and one hundred and thirteen second graders. And so that's a utilization rate of sixty-seven percent currently, roughly right around sixty-seven percent. And I believe you all have the handouts. Did you get some handouts with the demographics?
No.
Okay. Then I'll go through those with you that the population at Erby, twenty-nine point one percent of our population is African-American, forty-seven point eight percent is Caucasian, fourteen point five percent is Hispanic Latino, seven point eight percent of our students are multiracial, point three are Native American, and point three are Asian. As far as male and females at our school, we have fifty-one point seven percent males and forty-eight point three percent females there at Erby. So I went through those specific demographics with you there. I'll let you look at those specific demographics and go with the general numbers for you since you now have that in front of you. Alachua Elementary School, as you know, we serve third, fourth, and fifth graders. At Alachua Elementary School, we have a total enrollment there of three hundred and twenty-two students with a school capacity of five hundred and twenty-five. We're showing approximately a sixty-one percent utilization at Alachua Elementary School. We currently have, in third grade, one hundred and fourteen students. In fourth grade, we have one hundred and nineteen students. And in fifth grade, we have eighty-nine students. As we like to say, up the hill at Mabane Middle School, we have total enrollment right now, three hundred and seventy-four students with a total school capacity of seven hundred and eighty-eight. That's a utilization rate at Alachua Elementary School of approximately forty-eight percent. At this time, we have one hundred and forty-seven sixth graders, one hundred and twenty-six seventh graders, and one hundred and one eighth graders. And then, Red Raiders at Santa Fe High School, right now, the enrollment there is one thousand one hundred and forty-three students with a school capacity of one thousand two hundred and ninety-one students. As far as our school use there, we are showing eighty-nine percent utilization. And by grade level, at Santa Fe High School, we have two hundred and eighty-five freshmen, three hundred and fourteen sophomores, three hundred and three juniors, and two hundred and forty-one seniors. And so at this time, those are our demographics at the schools here in the city of Alachua. And if we can, if I may proceed with just sharing some general information about the schools and some of the recent activities and achievements there.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just stop. I missed the percentages on Erby as far as the current enrollment and the capacity and the percentage. And I'm sorry if I missed that.
No worries. The total enrollment there is three hundred and fifty-eight students with a total school capacity of five hundred and thirty-six with a utilization rate of sixty-seven percent.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. And so some of you might have been following before the holidays, the winter holidays, right before we released. But school grades were released in December of two thousand twenty-three, and that was for the previous school year, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. This being a baseline year for school accountability grading, schools were calculated on strictly proficiency. And what that means is the students that were proficient at Level Three or higher, right? So there weren't any learning gains calculated in there. School grades for this school year, the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year, will include proficiency and learning gains because now there's the previous year's data to do some comparison. We'll have two years' worth of data to... The state will, I say we will, but the state will, to calculate learning gains in each classroom for each student. So we do expect to see continued success in our schools this spring as we sit for Progress Monitoring III. You'll hear the acronyms. Where currently, our students are taking PM II. You may have heard some of your students talking about PM II. That's Progress Monitoring II. That's the second one of the year. And all of this is following the Florida Department of Education's model. PM III occurs at the end of the year, and it's the final one to measure growth and proficiency for the academic school year. Certainly, we'd like to take time while we're here to congratulate Alachua Elementary School for earning a school grade of C. Mrs. Burton, her leadership team, and their teachers and staff have put forth a ton of effort and work to increase student achievement at Alachua Elementary School. And their work showed in December, school grade of a C, which pulled Alachua Elementary School up and out of school improvement status.
And that grade is with Erby also, right?
Yes, and you're right. And we'll tap into that, too, because we are not going to forget about Erby. Yes, so the school is now eligible to receive funds through the School Recognition Program, which provides financial incentives for schools that raise their school grade. So they now will be meeting, probably have already met with their school advisory council or will be meeting soon before February first. It was a tight timeline. We just got this information from the state. So realize this is not a holdup on our schools in Alachua County. This is just getting the information, and then you know how we get that sometimes. Oh, by the way, let us know by February first how you're going to utilize these funds. Oftentimes, those funds are used to share with all the faculty and staff at a school. Certainly, if I had any recommendation, it takes the whole village. My recommendation is you share it with everyone. Everyone makes a difference at our schools. So, but that's just my personal view, and I know the school advisory council will be working with our respective principals. So moving on, and we're going to come back to Erby, but we'll go up the hill to Mabane. And although their school grade did remain a C for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year, the school's overall proficiency rate in ELA increased three percent. Their math proficiency rate increased six percent, and their science proficiency rate increased four percent. As you know, Mabane is under new leadership with Mr. Gamble there and the support from his teammates as well as the district's curriculum specialist. And we certainly do expect Mabane to see an increase in achievement and improved scores with the inclusion of learning gains in the spring as the accountability model calculates those grades. So we're excited about that, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say, you know, the biomedical mustangs are having their open house. So if you need someplace to go at six P.M., in all due respect, I know you all have a meeting as well, but for the public that's out there listening, and they may not know, there's an open house at Mabane this evening at six P.M. for their biomedical mustangs magnet program. Also, let's talk about Santa Fe High School. They earned a grade of a B for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. This was an increase from the C that was earned in the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. We'd like to, of course, congratulate Dr. Wright and his entire staff on the growth in ELA, science, and acceleration that contributed to the school grade increase. Like Alachua, the school is now eligible, Alachua Elementary is now... Santa Fe High School is now eligible as well to receive funds from the School Recognition Program. So hats off to Santa Fe High School for making that move during this time of change in the accountability model in the state of Florida. We certainly recognize all of their efforts. And then, going back to Erby, we save the best, those little ones for last, right? Not really, but they... It's definitely inspiring when you visit our campuses here in the city. But our Erby Elementary School students, they don't receive a grade under the Florida accountability system. However, since Erby is the feeder school for Alachua Elementary, and Alachua did earn a grade of a C, Erby is also going to receive school recognition funds designated by the state of Florida. So the state and the district recognize the work that, that core instruction that builds those foundational skills. We know that that's essential in grades three, four, and five, and moving forward. And so for the success to occur there at Alachua Elementary School, we know it's equally important the work we're doing there with our kindergarten through second-grade students and some of our preschoolers that are on site there. So we want to thank Mrs. Floyd and her team for all the work that they're doing there at Erby Elementary School to ensure our students arrive at Alachua Elementary with the skills necessary for success. So that's a general report just from the school grade side on what's happening in our schools here in the city. Some other successes that we may not have mentioned thus far are, you know, looking at Santa Fe High School. Santa Fe High School, their biotech, biotechnology, if you will, magnet, earned a federal grant recently for next school year. No, actually, it was for this school year, for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. They had earned a grant for a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Want to make sure you all were aware of that. We do have students at Santa Fe that took the Serve Safe certification examination. So that's the examination that food and nutrition specialists and folks working in restaurants and other places, our students at the Culinary Arts Magnet, and at Eastside High School, our students at Newberry that participate in culinary arts, although it's not a magnet, they take this. And the students that took it at Santa Fe, of those, eighty-six percent passed. So there are students that may not be in a magnet that do have opportunities to earn certifications. And that was just an example of what Santa Fe is also doing on top of all of their magnets and what they do in their core curriculum to serve our kids. Santa Fe High School, some of you were probably there. I imagine most of you were. On January eleventh, they had their career day, and that was right after, I think it was Thursday, after we returned from the winter holidays. They had over eighty vendors there, two hundred and fifty workers from said vendors that provided information and insight to our students about various jobs and opportunities that are out there for them in the future. So nonetheless, Career Day was a huge success, and we want to thank all of our vendors that were there and that have already signed up for next year. So we're trying to build on that momentum as we prepare now for next year.
I just want to say, I went there.
Yes, sir.
And I will say, it was exciting to see the enthusiasm, not only in the vendors, but the kids, too. Asked a lot of questions and really, really enjoyed themselves. Appreciate that very much.
Thank you for sharing that. There's some wonderful things definitely happening in our schools for students, and it's good to see the community and all of the different employers and vendors in Alachua County coming together for our children, no matter where they go to school. And that's the great thing about Alachua County. As far as Mabane, so the sixth and seventh grade classes for biomedical mustangs, you know, we're building that program out. They're currently in school, and we look forward to having an eighth-grade class there next year and adding two more sixth-grade magnet classes next year. So our plan is to add two classes in for the start of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. As far as Erby, just brief update there on some successes. They are proud to support their big sister, their sister school. So I know they take great joy in seeing what is happening at Alachua Elementary School because, as you know, we still have students at Alachua that have siblings at Erby, and all the parents and everybody know each other. So they're really, really proud of helping them raise their letter grade this past year and supporting the families and watching those children grow as they move up to Alachua Elementary School. It's always a pleasure when they come back and speak to our kindergarten through second graders, you know, when we do special days.
One question, as we move forward with these magnet programs, will... Not to Alachua Elementary, may not get one, but are they going to increase the curriculum there to help when they do go to those magnet programs?
Yes, sir. So they're doing work within the school that's related to STEAM. And if you remember a couple of years ago when you all helped us roll out the one-to-one initiatives for the students, they are definitely doing exploration of STEAM and trying to help prepare their students when they get up there. Those that are moving on, you know, to Mabane. And of course, well, this was shared, and I think it's important. It's hard to find teachers these days, certified teachers. And that's not true just here. As we know, in Alachua County, it's true across the state and the nation. But right now, you know, knock on wood, Erby is proud to report that they have no teachers out of field. And so I know we work hard to try to get folks into the classroom working with our children, whether it's teachers or peers or what have you. So we're happy to report that this evening. For Alachua Elementary, we just celebrated one of their biggest successes, but it's worth saying again, Mrs. Burton, that they have exited turnaround status. And some of what I'm sharing with you is from the school perspective, not from our perspective. It's what the principal shared with us, that some of the buzz on their campus. You know, they had a lot of turnover there, and following a year of dramatic turnover at Alachua Elementary School and open up, you know, opening up with seven classroom vacancies, they're currently, again, knock on wood, fully hired. And I think that's a tribute to the team there that continues to try to find the best candidates and individuals to come in and work with our students. And we just want to say, you know, that publicly that we're grateful for the continued support of our parents and our community because our team works awful hard to do that, and it's not an easy accomplishment in this day and age. So, so Mrs. Burton reported to us that we're fully hired. Of course, as has been the historic key within our schools here in Alachua, we continue to work on developing relationships with families and trying to have events where parents will come and be part of their child's education and welcome them into our school. So I know that Mrs. Burton is certainly grateful for her supportive PTA and the community partnerships that she has here in the city of Alachua. So some of the challenges, you know, and we could, I guess, started with some of them first, but what we just want to say to everybody is, you know, it's a... There's the challenge of attendance, and that's across the board. And so anything that we can do when we have opportunities to interact with our community and our parents to encourage them, that it is vitally important to their child's success to get them to school, then we would welcome that conversation with parents, that, you know, it's not an option. We went through a period where schools were closed for a while, but that doesn't mean attendance isn't important. It's actually more important now than it ever was, and it's always... They earned a grade of a B for the 2022-2023 school year. This was an increase from the C that was earned in the 2021-22 school year. We'd like to, of course, congratulate Dr. Wright and his entire staff on the growth in ELA, science and acceleration that contributed to the school grade increase. Like Alachua, the school is now eligible, Alachua Elementary is now, Santa Fe High School is now eligible as well to receive funds from the school recognition program. So hats off to Santa Fe High School for making that move during this time of change in the accountability model in the state of Florida. We certainly recognize all of their efforts. And then going back to Erby, we save the best, those little ones for last, right? Not really, but they, it's definitely inspiring when you, when you visit our campuses here in the city. But our Erby Elementary School students, they don't receive a grade under the Florida accountability system. However, since Erby is the feeder school for Alachua Elementary and Alachua did earn a grade of a C, Erby is also going to receive school recognition funds as designated by the state of Florida. So the state and the district recognizes the work that, that core instruction that builds those foundational skills. We know that that's essential in grades three, four and five and moving forward. And so for the success to occur there at Alachua Elementary School, we know it's equally important, the work we're doing there with our kindergarten through second grade students and some of our preschoolers that are on site there. So we want to thank Mrs. Floyd and her team for all the work that they're doing there at Erby Elementary School to ensure our students arrive at Alachua Elementary with skills necessary for success. So that's a, a general report just from the school grade side on what's happening in our schools here in the city. Some other successes that we may not have mentioned thus far are, you know, looking at Santa Fe High School. Santa Fe High School, their biotech, biotechnology, if you will, magnet, earned a federal grant recently for next school year that, no, actually it was for this school year. For the 2023-2024 school year, they had earned a grant for $118,000. Want to make sure y'all were aware of that. We do have students at Santa Fe that took the Serve Safe Certification Examination. So that's the examination that food and nutrition specialists and folks working in restaurants and other places are students at the Culinary Arts Magnet and at Eastside High School, are students at Newberry that participate in culinary arts. Although it's not a magnet, they take this. And the students that took it at Santa Fe, of those, 86% passed. So there are students that may not be in a magnet that do have opportunities to earn certifications. That was just an example of what Santa Fe is also doing on top of all of their magnets and what they do in their core curriculum to serve our kids. Santa Fe High School, some of you were probably there, I imagine most of you were. On January 11th, they had a, their career day. And that was right after, I think it was Thursday, after we returned from the winter holidays. They had over 80 vendors there, 250 workers from said vendors that provided information and insight to our students about various jobs and opportunities that are out there for them in the future. So nonetheless, Career Day was a huge success. And we want to thank all of our vendors that were there and that have already signed up for next year. So we're trying to build on that momentum as we prepare now for next year.
I just want to say I, I went there.
Yes, sir.
And I will say it was exciting to see the enthusiasm, not only in the vendors, but the kids too. Asked a lot of questions and really, really enjoyed themselves. Appreciate that very much.
Thank you for sharing that. There's some wonderful things definitely happening in our schools for students. And it's, it's good to see the community and all of the different employers and vendors in Alachua County coming together for our children, no matter where they go to school. And that's the great thing about Alachua County. As far as Mabane, so the sixth and seventh grade classes for biomedical mustangs, you know, we're building that program out. They're currently in school and we look forward to having an eighth grade class there next year and adding two more sixth grade magnet classes next year. So our, our plan is to add two classes in for the start of the 24-25 school year. As far as Erby, just brief update there on some successes. They are proud to support their big sister, their sister school. So I know they take great joy in seeing what is happening at Alachua Elementary School. Because as you know, we still have students at Alachua that have siblings at Erby and all the parents and everybody know each other. So they're really, really proud of helping them raise their letter grade this past year and supporting the families and watching those children grow as they move up to Alachua Elementary School. Where it's always a pleasure when they come back and speak to our kindergarten through second graders, you know, when we do special days.
One question, as we move forward with these magnet programs, will, not to Alachua Elementary may not get one, but are they going to increase the curriculum there to help when they do go to those magnet programs?
Yes, sir. So they're doing work within the school that's related to STEAM. And if you remember a couple of years ago, when you all helped us roll out the one-to-one initiatives for the students, they are definitely doing exploration of STEAM and trying to help prepare their students when they get up there. Those that are, are, are moving on, you know, to Mabane. And of course, well, this was shared and I think it's important. It's hard to find teachers these days, certified teachers. And, and it, that's not true just here, as we know in Alachua County. It's true across the state and the nation. But right now, you know, knock on wood, Erby is proud to report that they have no teachers out of field. And so I know we work hard to try to get folks into the classroom, working with our children, whether it's teachers or pairs or what have you. So we're happy to report that this evening. For Alachua Elementary, we just celebrated one of their biggest successes, but it's worth saying again, Mrs. Burton, that they have exited turnaround status. And some of what I'm sharing with you is from the school perspective, not from, from our perspective. It's, it's what the principal shared with us, that some of the buzz on their campus. You know, they had a lot of turnover there and following a year of, of dramatic turnover at Alachua Elementary School and open up, you know, opening up with seven classroom vacancies, they're currently, again, knock on wood, fully hired. And I think that's a tribute to the team there that continues to try to, to find the best candidates and individuals to come in and work with our, our students. And we just want to say, you know, that publicly that we're grateful for the continued support of our parents and our community because our, our team works awful hard to do that and it's not an easy accomplishment in this day and age. So, so Ms. Burton reported to us that we're fully hired. Of course, as has been the historic key within our, our schools here in Alachua, we continue to work on developing relationships with families and trying to have events where parents will come and be part of their child's education and welcome them into our school. So I know that Mrs. Burton is certainly grateful for her supportive PTA and the community partnerships that she has here in the city of Alachua. So some of the challenges, you know, and we could, I guess, started with some of them first, but what we just want to say to everybody is, you know, it's a, there's the challenge of attendance and that's across the board. And so anything that we can do when we have opportunities to interact with our community and our parents to encourage them, that it is vitally important to their child's success to get them to school, then we, we would welcome that, that conversation with parents that, you know, it's not an option. We went through a period where schools were closed for a while, but that doesn't mean attendance isn't important. It's actually more important now than it ever was and it's always been important. So any help that we could get with attendance there would be wonderful. As far as increasing student enrollment, we, we see there's quite a bit of building either projected or about to get going here. I know up behind Lowe's and over here, the progress center, right? There's quite a bit of, on the slate. And so we have room, obviously, in our schools. We do want to try to increase student enrollment and market some of the positive things that are happening at all of our schools. So I, we do know we have challenges with aging facilities. We have challenges with busing that we've been working on. And we know those, those challenges are there for us to tackle, so.
With the demographics and all that enrollment, we do have quite a few houses in the progress right here. And over the years, that's going to increase the enrollment of these schools just in the city of Alachua. But I want to know, I know this, I, I believe if I'm right, that this was pushed back and that's the renovation of the, all of our schools here. And that is needed very, very much in these schools. And I, I want to say it was pushed back a year or two, but is, when is that going to be able to happen?
That's a great question. So we're having a workshop, we're meeting with a half cent sales committee on February 5th. We have a board meeting on the 6th and I want to say our workshop is February 7th. And so we're going to have a half cent sales tax workshop and we'll be sharing some of, of what we're going to be doing there. And you're right, we have a lot of schools within the county, here in the city, that, that need attention. We've got some projects that are in progress currently. And you've probably seen some of the ones we've completed, like one that people would see immediately would be like the project we did at Santa Fe High School Auditorium. That was 1.2 million, but it's not a whole school, all classrooms project. You know, like the Mr. Herschel, Dr. Herschel Science Building, you know, it's not of that magnitude. Believe it or not, I think Erby, which was a new school, is now 33 years old. It was built in 1991. And so, and we know Santa Fe High School and Mabane, they're all as old as GHS, Lake Forest. We can go right on down the list, right? But certainly, Alachua Elementary as well has talked to us about some of their needs. So we are working on that, on what that's going to look like, which would be a different list than was produced when they were working on.
Well, I was glad to see you. I was up at a SAC meeting at Mabane and I was glad to see that the iron fences have gone up in the gates. That's been a big plus for them.
Yes, sir. I think the last, that fencing has gone up, but probably the last big project we did at Mabane was the gym floor. But that was now five, six years ago, I suppose, right? So, and certainly at, at Santa Fe, we're looking at intercom, fire alarm, some of those infrastructure things too, that you don't necessarily see, but are critical to safety and, and communication on the school campus. Plumbing, you know, plumbing's a challenge at all of our schools. If they're 30 years or older, it's a challenge. When they're 50, 60, 70 years or older, plumbing tends to be a challenge, for sure. So there are some projects that are, that, you know, like at Erby that are being, being evaluated. And, you know, particularly it's maintenance type of work though, and not huge capital outlet, outlay. But let's say it's the doors going into the cafeteria, which is important. Replacing those, they're, they're looking at roof leaks that are occurring there in the cafeteria in that building and some things like that. So, but you are right, there's a lot of work there for us to do. As far as, I think areas of support, what's needed, we mentioned that a little bit earlier, but we want to continue to market our schools, the magnet opportunities and that, that step up from Erby to Alachua to Mabane and on to Santa Fe with ag and biomedical technology and those opportunities. So, let's see.
The other thing too is I have a lot of people call me and ask me about how are these schools doing? And they said, because they get on Google and I said, please don't say that again. I'm asking them, when anybody asks me that, I ask them to please take their kids, go to a PTA meeting, meet the, meet the principal, meet the teachers and understand what they're doing and they can give you a direct answer to exactly what they're doing. And then make your decision after that before, and don't let Google tell you what to do. And that is, they've done that and the majority of them have stayed at the school they really wanted to be at. I mean, here in Alachua.
Yes, sir. And, and fortunately, but unfortunately, that's true everywhere, that the school community is not the building itself. But we know that we have deferred and delayed maintenance and renovations that need to take place. But when you get inside the walls and you get with the children and the adults working in that building, that's the school community. Step outside of the walls in the, in the city of Alachua, that's the school community. That doesn't get us off the hook on what we need to do and what we need to do to make improvements. But you're absolutely right, that if people will go and visit and give our administrators, teachers and staff an opportunity, they'll see that their children will be taken care of. So that's my opinion. Now, when it comes to supporting some, some additional things here in Alachua, we're looking to offer an additional VPK class at Erby through some Title I funding for the 2024-25 school year. This will increase student capacity. We estimate roughly 20 students. We currently have 18 applicants zoned for Erby that have applied for the 2024-25 school year. Historically, Erby is one of our two elementary schools that has had the longest waiting list in the past. So we're looking to expand. And I know they, they cluster and take some students in from other places, but we're expanding for the students that are here and zoned to Erby is what we're looking at, at, for the expansion of that. And oftentimes, I know Mr. Deros and I met previously. We welcome any opportunity to work with the city as far as sharing with you all in your community what students should arrive at kindergarten with, what skill set and what they should be doing. And then reach outside of VPK and pre-K ESE and help collaborate with you all to share resources with our preschools and our daycares and what have you here within the community. Because I think that's the ultimate goal is, no matter where the child is, is a three and four-year-old, let's have them ready to enter kindergarten. And so that's a different meeting and a different discussion on how we can assist in making that happen. We can't be the lead player on that, but we can certainly provide what we know as far as our expertise when it comes to what our children need when they get to kindergarten.
Mr. Mayor, first I want to thank Superintendent Andrew for that valuable information and sharing those successes that we've heard. We kind of covered a lot of ground with the A, B and C items and I just want to make sure that we leave time for our collective boards to have discussion pertaining to that. Just wanted to make sure.
At the end of the meeting there.
I'm sorry?
At the end of the meeting, yeah.
Well, not, not comments, but just if there's any discussion based on those.
No, how can the city commission assist and help, you know, that, that would be.
I'm, I'm sorry, clarification, Mr. Mayor. I'm saying item A and item B. We, we've received a lot of valuable information, but I just, I didn't want, I wanted to make sure that we left some time for our collective board to, if there's any discussion for A or B. And if there isn't, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that we left time for that.
Excuse me, I have some staff here in the audience that are prepared to share. The superintendent has done an overview of everything going on in Alachua County and the city of Alachua. We're so excited to be here and I'm so glad he took the time to share that kind of information, but I don't want it to be redundant. We do have some folk who are going to speak and address the next section on our agenda. If you would come up, please. And we can start with, unless we, unless the mayor wants to stop for some discussion now from citizens? Or can we go forward?
Let's go forward.
All right, thank you.
We're going to have comment at the end of the meeting.
Just a minute, Mrs. Surtin. I can't hear you. All right, I am so sorry. Thank you, Mrs. Green. Then if the superintendent has covered every single thing with accomplishments, grades, assessments, results and areas of need, then we will then move, Mayor, into how can the commission assist us or help?
Well, we had a, also, I want to say too, that we had in our strategic meeting last year, and one of the, the top item on there was, how can we interact with the schools and make them the best they can be? That was our goal. And what we did is we created a education board. We have some retired educators on this and very well and, and know what they're talking about. And coming to these meetings, they've, we were able to ask them questions. And there's one coming up in another week or so. And so I just, I think we've done, started out to try and do a better job. But I want to make sure, would you like to say something?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Mr. Andrew pointed out, we did meet some time ago. And essentially, what I had explained to Mr. Andrew is that this commission's highest priority in our strategic plan was to, to partner with our community schools, not necessarily only to help with the grades, because that's the ultimate thing. But as we all know, anybody that has anything to do with education, there's so much more that goes beneath that and is so vital to the success of our children, other than just a school grade. And so this commission put that on our strategic plan, starting last year. And this past year, it not only rose from higher priority, it became the highest priority and it was the highest out of all strategic initiatives that we had. So when I reached out to Mr. Andrew, we had a discussion and it was simply this. The city of Alachua is willing to do whatever we can to partner with the community schools, with the school board, to do what we can to help. And we do have some educators on our board, so they're certainly experienced and seasoned in that category. But we, we don't want to pretend that we are the experts. So we wanted to just reach out and say to the experts, what is it that we can do to help? Mr. Andrew gave me some great suggestions and we have, we've kind of taken off with those suggestions. But in addition to that, we formed the Education Task Force. And so I, and I regret that our liaison, staff liaison, David Weisner, is not here this evening. He had a family emergency earlier today, so I know he is, he is missing this sorely. But we have, we've had two public meetings in addition to a public workshop that was well attended. So there's a lot of, and I'm, I'm sure that there's, there's folks in the audience here that would express what education in the city of Alachua means to them. We just, you know, as far as item C, and I'm really only speaking on behalf of the city commission, we just want to find out what it is that we can do to help. The last thing we want to do is insert our, you know, our suggestions. We want, we want your suggestions on what the city of Alachua, the city commission, the city staff can do, whatever we can do to help. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, before I jump in, because as a former educator and I want the citizens to know, I didn't realize that Erby was as old until I heard that number tonight, because that's where I started. For six full months, I interned at Erby Elementary as for principalship and learned so much from this community and involved myself dead in the community while I was here for those six full months and thoroughly enjoyed it. So I feel like I'm back home tonight.
Ms. Chris Herschel was the first principal there.
That's correct.
An Alachua resident.
That is correct. And so I'm going to open up to my colleagues, if they'd like to do any responses at this point, they can. Or any citizens who may want to share with us some thoughts tonight.
We'll let them start and then we'll start and then this, we'll go to the citizens, okay?
I don't see light, so you'll have to raise your hand. All right, Dr. Rockwell.
So you heard Mr. Andrew mention that we would like to be able to disseminate information to local preschools and childcare centers. And I think that that might be an area where we could enlist the city commission's help to organize some of that. I would defer to Mr. Andrew on details, but when I heard him say that, that sounded like a, a primary way that we can help. Early literacy is critical for a long-term success for our students. And so, you know, I'm, again, as board members, we don't do operations, you know how this works. But perhaps there's some collaboration we could do on training, some of the preschool staff, getting information to them so that students come to school ready to learn. I'm also a former educator and I can tell you that there is nothing that replaces having adult humans to work with students. So the biggest thing, and probably any teacher would tell you, the biggest thing that they could use is quality volunteers to come in, work one-on-one with students who need extra help, read to students, help organize materials, especially in the youngest grades. There's a lot of preparing activities, cutting things out, laminating things, stapling packets together, all of that kind of work that frees up teachers to spend their time doing the data analysis that allows them to really tap in to students where they are and meet their needs and do that data-driven instruction if they have volunteers to do some of that prep work for them. So I think from what I'm hearing, those seem to be two areas that, you know, we could partner with the city on getting more volunteers into our classrooms and on getting some collaboration with the local preschools.
Thank you. Anyone else from the school board?
Mrs. Surtin.
Thank you, Dr. McNeeley. Thank you, Mayor Cooper. I, one, one of the things that, in addition to what Dr. Rockwell said, is maybe some type of incentive or promotion around school attendance, improving school attendance, since that is something that was mentioned by our superintendent as one, as a challenge. It's just reminding our community members and their families that of school, the importance of school attendance.
Anyone else? Commissioners?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. You know, this former educator was going to talk. Let me just say thank you for coming out. And Dr. McNeeley, you are so right. I didn't realize Erby had been there 30 years until I was invited to the 30-year celebration. So the years really do pass. I had the opportunity to visit one-on-one with all of our four principals. And I want to really thank them. I visited Alachua Elementary and Mabane before Christmas. And I visited Erby and Santa Fe after Christmas, this, this January. And it was a wonderful, wonderful visit, chat with the principals. And Mr. Andrews, you really have targeted the items that I had asked our city manager to add to the agenda, so thank you. I will share this, some of the concerns that the principals shared with me, I think have already worked themselves out with a little communication with some people. But one of the key things they all said was mentoring. They need mentors. And I am committed to help each of our schools get mentors. As I look around this room, I see some that I may be calling on. I'm going to blink my eyes at them. I'm gonna blink my eyes at them. So get ready, 'cause the children need us, and we need to help them. So again, thank you so much. I hope that these meetings will continue, 'cause it's been a minute since we've had one. But please know, we're here to help.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's always hard to follow Commissioner Green-Brown, and we always defer to her when it comes to education. I wanted, speaking of mentoring, if I can bring that up. I just happened to, to think of this. There's two nonprofit service organizations. So Quanis of Santa Fe and the Alachua Lions Club. I think both of those would be great to tap into for mentoring. Dr. Hirsch, of course, is a member of the Lions Club. And Quanis of Santa Fe, they're always looking to, they have many, many different kids programs that they do. Remember, Surtin, you mentioned attendance, you know, goals. I know Quanis of Santa Fe has, you know, some programs regarding that. I think that's, I just wanted to bring that up as, you know, reaching outside and thinking outside the box. And some of that, we, we all, we, when we attended the work, our task force workshop, that's one of the things that came up, is how do we tap into the community? You know, there's organizations out there that are right here, local, that would be more than happy to assist our leadership at our schools and assist, assist our children. Just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
You know, I'm glad that you brought that up. And my husband was instrumental in starting a Masonic lodge. So we will get them right on it, Dr. McNeeley.
Thank you, thank you. All right. I look forward to that, both.
I'm just gonna add, the attendance is probably the most important thing, I think, we were talking about with the early education part, of course, getting them ready before they enter kindergarten. I think we have, our next workshop is, I believe, slated for the 29th. I think that's something we can probably try to figure out as a unit to how to help with the attendance in the schools. One of the, and I love the mentoring idea. Ms. Shirley always has great things to help us and can push me and others to be more accountable in that. One of the questions I, I did have is the turnaround. My children went through Erby, Alachua, Mabane, and Santa Fe, 24 years, lived here. My experiences were fantastic because of the teachers and the leadership that we had in the schools. One of the things during, towards the tail end, I would like to ask is, for the principals and the teachers, for the buildings that are old, the things that I also hear in the community is the AC's not working, or things are not working, takes them weeks and weeks to get that. Is with, just for us as far as, is there a turnaround time for a teacher or somebody that is teaching for those things in our public school system? Is there, you will have a classroom, will be 48 hours or 10 days? Is, parents ask those things all the time, and we never really have an answer if we know that a classroom's been out of AC or water or some of the other things that have been brought up, like mold and things in the room.
So when it comes to those issues, if they're brought forward, then there will be immediate action in the facilities maintenance department. Some things, now when it comes to equipment failures, so mold, mildew, those types of things, as soon as that's brought up, then we'll get an environmental safety coordinator out there and then get that addressed. Usually, that's an outside vendor that comes in and does, let's say, that type of cleaning. But when it comes to the HVAC units, sometimes, there's two challenges we've had, not excuses, but there, the supply chain and just not having enough certified, qualified HVAC technicians. So, you know, across the board there in our maintenance, we've been short. But that doesn't mean we just wait till one of our, our technicians can get to it. That's when then one of the subcontractors would be called in to work on it. But beyond, some things are fairly, you can fix fairly quickly, as you know. Some things, if it's a failure of a chiller or something, then we get into some challenges. I, I know, like, right now, I think we have a boiler project going on. I want to say, I don't, was that Erby? Alachua Elementary School? But, so some, some of those projects take a little bit longer, but it is definitely important to us to have the classroom environment, the climate, right? Because you can't learn if it's too whole, too hot, too cold, too dark, you know? Your asthma attacks coming on because there's mold or mildew. We definitely understand those environmental conditions and the immediate impact on learning, so. But did I miss anything there, Mrs. Eunice?
And this might be a Miss Eunice question, but like, following up on, on what she asked. So when there are things that go wrong, are they prioritized? And then is there a response back to the person who put in the thing saying it'll be 10 days? Or is there some sort of protocol that's followed? I think that might be helpful. That might help answer a little bit more of your question.
So usually, a teacher, let's say, brings it to the attention of the assistant principal, principal, or the executive assistant. Quite often, it is the executive assistant. Once in a while, a plant mechanic, they'll enter the work order into the system, which immediately pops up over at the district office. So from the teacher or the staff member, it goes into the work order system. Now, the responses back don't go directly back to the teacher, but they're in the system for the executive assistant or the principals designee. Oftentimes, it is an assistant principal for administration that's checking those work orders to see what's going on. What we'll make sure of, I know Mrs. Eunice has done an excellent job of improving communication and transportation. We'll also make sure that we've thought outside of the box for our staff members that bring forward those concerns on, you know, I understand they go into the work order system, but also the conversations with our school-based personnel that pick up the phone and call to, because the work order system's only as good as it being checked immediately. And if I, I'm out on a call somewhere else, and I'm a technician or a coordinator or a director, I might not see that, so. Is there anything else there, Mrs. Eunice? Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to get, ask, Mr. Posh, do you have anything?
I just want to echo what my fellow commissioners said and, and mentioned the Education Task Force that the city manager talked about. I mean, that group has not been in, how, how long, like, three months? I mean, they have hit the ground running. It's a very talented group of board members. Travis White is here tonight. I don't know if any of the other board members are here. But I mean, they are mission-focused, really on pre-K. What can we do to help with pre-K? Echoing what has already been stated by our school board members and the superintendent. I think we've got some great folks working on the right things. And if, if we can collaborate on those things, I think we're headed off in the right direction.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add to that, one of the things that's gonna be addressed at the next meeting, they're working on developing a strategic plan for that task force. So that's, that's what's gonna be happening at the next meeting. As you can imagine, from our workshop, there was a lot of input. And so now it's to, to kind of correlate all that information and try to get to a point where we're assessing those things and prioritizing, you know, what we can do, whether it be low-hanging fruit, things that we can accomplish in a year, or even some initiatives that will be something that will take, you know, a little more extended time. But that's, that's gonna be the, the focus of the next meeting.
I have a colleague, Mrs. Surtin.
Thank you. I had one question. We've had some changes, recent changes to our bus routes and eliminating some courtesy routes. And I've had several citizens reach out to me about there not being crossing guards. Is that something that your police department would staff, or does that? I'm asking.
And, Mr. Mayor, I'm, obviously, our chief of police is here, but I, I don't believe that we have any shortage at that point. And we, we've been fully staffed for as long as I can remember.
No, I'm guessing, I mean, like, as far as assigning school crossing guards, like, where the students would have to cross here at 441 that are walking up to Erby, because our youngest learners are, that may not have a bus that are in the apartment complex on the, just, I want to say, north of here, but I think of the CVS there would have to come up. And then right at the 235, 241 interchange there, it's very busy. So that was just something that was, was, was brought to my attention. I don't live up in here, but, and that's a concern of the parents or the students. And you know, recently, I think yesterday, they commemorated the one-year anniversary of Kayden, Kayden, I think it's Mincy, the, the student who was ran over by the car and killed on Hip, J.C. Hip. And so I got that call saying, "Look, you guys need to talk about that and make sure we have school crossing guards out, since there are children that are wa, more children walking now." So I'm not sure if that request is made through your police, the Alachua Police Department, or if that's something that our Transportation Department and those would have to.
Yeah, I can certainly defer to our chief of police, but I don't believe that we've received a request at this time. But certainly, if, if that is, it's certainly because of changes that have occurred in bus routes and things of that nature, certainly, we, we don't want to be behind the curve on any of those things.
And as well as up by the Mabane area up there.
As, as, as our traffic picks up, we need to look at things differently just about every, every month. And here comes our chief of police right now.
I gotta, there we go. Jesse Sandusky, chief of police with the Alachua Police Department. We certainly haven't been made aware of any bus route changes that would require us to add any additional school crossing guards. So the, we do have the, the crossway, the above, it's a bridge, walk-across bridge, that you can go from one side of 441 to the other. From my knowledge, I think all the students that cross from that area cross over that bridge. That is a safe way to get across 441. We can certainly evaluate and look and see if there's any areas that could use another crossing guard. But currently, all of our crossing guard positions are filled, to my knowledge. And if we do have one out, we always have a police officer that covers that spot. So we can definitely take a look and see how that change in bus routes affected our area. But I was not made aware of anything prior to that, so. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Superintendent Andrew, who? Who, how would the city of Alachua, how would our police department know that there's a need? How, how would that get communicated to them? Or how does that, in the, what's your protocol on that?
Typically, they'd be working with our director of transportation. So.
Okay.
I don't know that a lot of these crossing areas are within the two-mile walk radius. So a lot of the busing and the routes wouldn't impact those unless they're courtesy riders, and they'd be on the bus instead of walking. But if, anywhere within two-mile radius of Mabane, Alachua, Erby, Santa Fe, those students are not on the bus. And so those, those, you know.
Right.
The, the crossings, a lot of our crossings, as you know, have been established for many years up at Mabane, where they cross right there. Yes, ma'am. And at Erby, and then the overpass, as Chief Sandusky said. But if there was, if we created one, then they would bring that forward from the Department of Transportation. You know, a need for a crossing guard.
Right. I guess that's what I'm asking, is, is will your director of transportation be reaching out to our police department?
We will follow up with them, and our chief of operations, Mrs. Eunice, is here. And so transportation is in her area, and so we'll be following up with you, Chief Sandusky. Yes, sir.
All right, Ms. McNeeley.
Mayor, I wanted to say one last thing before you close out. As far as the Education Task Force that you have implemented, and it's well on its way, I hope in the strategic area of your planning that you will have some type of endorsement of engaging your parents, all of the parents, because that's so needed in all of our schools. And sometimes, parents feel that they are not welcome or their ideas and input is not sufficient. But please know that we expect and entertain and want to hear from our parents. So I hope that will be a vital part of your strategic plan.
Mr. Mayor, I can echo what Mr. Andrew said earlier, and that it, you know, it's cliche, but it is true. It takes a village. And so the parents have been first and foremost in all of our communications and marketing to try to get them as, involved as well. That's, you know, without going into too much detail, that was also a part of our early discussion when we met. We want to, you know, we don't want to stop just in our public community schools. We want to make sure we've reached out to private sector daycares. Anywhere there's a child in the city of Alachua, we don't want any of them to, even with the private charter school. So we've reached out to all those. But also, we want to develop, and again, with your, with your guidance, we want to be able to, you know, help with resources as far as curriculum that we can get to parents, even if it's curriculum on how to stay together as a family. So we fully understand, and, and believe me, I have a commission that is, is right on Johnny on the spot as far as making sure parents are all first and foremost with that task force.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to add one thing, please. One, I want to say again, thank you. And one of the things I would like to add is that you mentioned for Erby Elementary, another VPK program. I, I love it. I don't want to add work, but I would love to have three or four more at Erby so that we can get them in school a little sooner. One of the questions is, again, is tendence. Currently, VPK does not get buses to Erby, correct? Parents drop those children off, is that correct? Okay. Okay, so we can circle back at the workshop on that, too, I think.
All right, can I finish? All right, thank you very much. I, I was involved with a high school for many, many years in the 90s. And all those kids now, those teenagers, are adults that have teenage kids. And so they still have my number, and they want to call me up because their kids are going to all these schools now. And so what I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, what they ask, they go to PTA meetings. And what they'd like to see, if nothing else, our school board member, one of our school board members, to be at, at least once a year, at each one of our schools for a PTA meeting. And when they find that out, I'm sure it would be a crowded session. And they, they want to be able to talk to our school board member at a PTA meeting. And that's when all the parents get together. And I think that would draw them in even more if they could have that and get answers answered, or get questions answered. And I think that would be a wonderful thing. Just four schools, one time a year, one PTA meeting. And once that's established, and once it gets out there, I think you're gonna have a really good crowd at each one of the schools. The other thing is, and I'm sure this is gonna be on the, our, our board membership, our education board membership is mentorship, you know? Because we, we've done that before, but it's slacked off a little bit. That we have so many businesses around here, and they used to give an extra hour, you know, an hour a week or something like that, to a couple of their, their employees to go over and mentor the kids. And if we can energize them again to do that, I think that would be a wonderful thing for not only the schools, but those businesses. Because, you know, them getting out and doing something very positive brings them back in a positive attitude, and they want to get better at what they do at work. So I, that's what I would like to hear, too, maybe a suggestion if the school board would think about that, too. That would be wonderful, and I appreciate that very much. Well, we need to go ahead and move on to citizens' comment. If anyone from the audience would like to comment, and be, please be precise with what you'd like to ask and what you'd like to say. Please state your name for the record, also.
My check.
There you go.
My sports announcer's coming out in me now. Good evening. My name is Travis White. I'm the vice chair of the Education Task Force for the city of Alachua. First, just wanted to say how wonderful it is to see both the city commission and our school board members and superintendent all together collaborating. That is what I took very copious notes back there for our meeting, which I want to invite the public to, city commission, school board members. Superintendent Andrew, if you could- the public to, city commission, school board members, Superintendent Andrew, if you could have, you know, we had such a fantastic showing from your chairs that came to our last workshop. This workshop, I think, will be even more in-depth in getting down to, you know, the exact things that we think that we can help and collaborate with. So I would just encourage everyone, next workshop is next Monday, 5 o'clock, right here. So thank you once again for being here this evening.
Thank you. Anyone else? With that, we'd like to, we've pretty much commissioned board members in, in formal discussion, I think we've had that already.
We've had that.
So does anyone really want to make a motion to adjourn? Evidently not.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.